Okay, I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for the evening of April 4th. You have before you an agenda there? Can I have my motion approved, the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Hold the favor?
Aye.
Comments from the public? Just identify yourself.
No, he wrote it down. Cheers.
Hi, my name is Jackie Fai and I teach second grade at Nantucket Elementary School. And I, I'm sure most of you know, our school is from pre-K to grade two. And I just wanted to make a comment about our SEL program in our school system. And at this current time, I am just finding, along with many of my colleagues, that our school's been having an uptick in behaviors and a lot of social emotional needs. And with that being said, we're finding that we're not being supported properly or the way that we need to be because currently our school has two guidance counselors and one social worker. And that seems like a lot, but it's really not because the guidance counselors have to teach within the classrooms. So they are not available to help with the situations that are happening, which is like fire starting. It's like it starts in one spot and then it just keeps on going. So when this is happening, our administration is pulled to the floor. So they're not able to complete the tasks that they need to do daily as an administrator because they're trying to help support the classroom teachers and support the guidance people as long, as well as a social worker. So I just, with our school, we used to, in the past, we used to have a student support center and it was manned by a person so that we were able to send the students there and they could work out their situations and then be brought back into the classroom. As well as an option program that we used to have in our school. So it works similarly where the kids might be working within that space for a day or two or for as long as they needed to before they could, you know, come back into the mainstream. So we don't have those in our school anymore. So that is also where we're falling down and it's just putting more pressure on the classroom teachers, the support staff, the TAs, our administration as well. So it's just something that I just wanted you all to be aware of and that our school really does need some support. We need to be looking at the program in a different way. And I just feel like it needs to be manned better in order that we can teach all of the learners in our classroom because it's hard when you have some students that are absorbing a lot of your time with their social emotional needs or their behavior needs. Then you have all the other students that are just kind of blowing in the wind while we're trying to de-escalate the situation. So it's just my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Brent Tartamella and I'm a parent of a couple of freshmen that are in the school system and I've been involved in the middle school, school, what do we not commit, counselors group. And I'm on the high school, school council as well. And I want to first, I'll be as brief as I can, but I want to say all my comments really come from a place of, I know we've just gone through a major pandemic and everybody's overworked and overtired and under-resourced. So please know my comments come from that good spot. But we do have a school crisis going on, as I believe, with drugs and alcohol and school pride. And the way this kind of came about to me was I was at the first school coffee of high school and I said, you know, I know drugs and alcohol are a home problem. But what's the philosophy of the school administration and how do you deal with that? And I was told that we don't have a drug and alcohol crisis here. We don't, we don't have any. Do we have any of that? They looked at the other administrator in the room and they said, no, we don't have any problem with drugs and alcohol. Well, fast forward to some Tuesday or Wednesday night when we were summoned for an emergency meeting about plumbing. And after hearing about fifteen minutes or twenty minutes of that, I stood up and I said, this isn't about plumbing. This is a drug and alcohol and culture crisis rearing its head through the plumbing situation. And then we were told how many vapes they had confiscated. Was just found myself at a crossroads because we were told there was no problem and now there's this huge problem. So anyways, we know there's a vaping crisis. Kids are not going to the bathroom, right? We haven't, up until recently, really been proactive. We didn't even admit there was a problem. So how could we enforce a problem or enforce it if we didn't admit that we had it? And I think it's so bad that we do need to throw the kitchen sink at it, right? We need vape detectors. We need education. We need a diversion program. We need a lot of that in place, you know, immediately. And so I have other notes here about, interesting after hearing Jackie's comments tonight. And we know all the open positions. I guess my question would be, what are we doing? How are we thinking differently? Are we putting, I know we're in a collective bargaining year, right? Are we increasing pay? Are we adding housing savings? Are we expanding our search for employees on, on the other side, right? I'd rather have a counselor here eighty percent of the time who can't get here on the boat sometimes than none at all, right, to help out with the problems that were just mentioned. We've got the best restaurants, the hotels and beaches. We pride ourselves in having the lowest tax rates. But our school system's in the bottom fifty percent of all Massachusetts schools. And so I guess at conclusion, I would just ask the school committee if we could hold the administration accountable for some immediate and actionable change towards school improvement and not a plan that we're waiting to implement in the years to come.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brent.
Seeing anyone else?
Hi, my name is Hadley Dutcher. I'm a parent of a freshman at Nantucket High School. And I just want to piggyback on what Brent said. And I think what I'd like to say is that there's a lot of people in the community who do want to help with these issues. And I think one of the committees that I would like to see start up again, meeting regularly, is the master plan committee. Because that committee, I feel like encompasses a lot of the things that we need to talk about in our district as far as, you know, housing for teachers on campus, facilities upgrades, whether or not we have enough room for the surplus in students that we're seeing, you know, forecasted in the district. And in addition to the athletic expansion, of course. So I think that that committee, I would like to see that committee formed again, maybe with new people or the same. I'd volunteer to be part of it. I'm sure a lot of parents would be interested. And we could maybe start looking at a lot of these wide-ranging issues and helping because as Brent said, a lot of the administration is taxed and understandably so. Thank you.
Thank you, Hadley.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, so I'll start with enrollment. We are currently at one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one students in the month of, of April, up by eight students from one thousand seven hundred and thirteen in March. We have four new students at NES, two at NIS, one at CPS and one at NHS. We've seen a little bit of growth this month. The next piece I'm going to turn over to our tech director, Jen Erickson, who's going to give us an update on all things ransomware, cyber attack and the recovery.
So just in talking about the various things that we've been able to accomplish so far in recovering from the ransomware attack. We have touched every machine that we can find because they keep popping up. But we've got all the machines cleaned up and formatted or in a queue to do so. But every teacher has a machine to work with. Every student has a machine to work with. They, they were affected minimally. They were pretty much back up and running within a day and a half on the machines that they were already using because those machines authenticated in the cloud and were not affected by the ransomware. The internal machines that the administrative staff worked with, printers, servers, that kind of thing. We still have a few that we're working on. We are still redesigning how the network works so that it's segmented and we keep things safer. And, but pretty much everybody that had a, had a machine, at least one machine before, is back with that single machine. And we are looking at getting additional machines up and running. The focus right now is to make sure that we have some of the newer initiatives to get back in place properly, running. One of the primary ones is our munis users, so the financial system that the town uses. We have, I think, close to twenty users around the school department that were not able to access munis. The town made special arrangements for Martin and Veronica so we could do things like get payroll done and pay bills, that kind of thing. So that's been a real focus the last few weeks is getting those users back on. Tonight I was working until five thirty on getting some of the printers. We only have a couple of those munis printers on, but we're working on that. We're also in the process of enrolling into two-factor authentication and getting that set up so that we can then start rolling that out. We're working, we notified the entire superintendent's list last week that we are going to be rolling out passwords instead of passwords. We had some people in, within the school district that had not changed a password in years. So now we are encouraging much, much longer passwords, which it's easier to think of as a pass phrase. And how often we change those, making sure everything is changed over by the time the teachers go out for the summer. Things that we're still working on, oh, we also have the security system is up and running within each school. So every school has a location in their school that they can view the cameras and export recordings. Some of the things we're still working on are the HVAC system. We have the facilities, the booking system where we book the rooms and stuff. Those are some of the things that we're still working on. So am I remembering everything? Okay. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. First of all, thanks for all your hard work, you and your team. You said that you, every machine that you touched and they keep popping up. My question is, the ones that keep popping up, isn't there a way to track where these machines are and what's out?
Yeah, well, we shut down everything. The, the, the network that got infected is shut down except for certain kinds of devices. So when it got shut down, for example, maybe there was a classroom that they had a desktop that they used to connect to a printer or something like that. That got shut down, can't get back on, but we weren't necessarily looking for that. Our priority has always been making sure the teachers and the students are on and then the administration, administrative staff is on.
Okay. So you're not, you're not talking about individual Chromebooks, are you?
Not Chromebooks, but PCs.
Okay. I'm just wondering, when they get a Chromebook, don't, isn't there a serial like that?
Yeah, we have an inventory tracking system.
That's what I'm saying. So if you keep saying they keep popping up, why can't you just go through your inventory and find out which ones are missing and who is it attached to?
We're still recovering and we haven't gotten to the point where we couldn't, we have the time to do that kind of audit of the inventory system. There's over twenty-five-hundred devices.
Okay.
So.
All right. Thank you. Great job, by the way.
Now, did we have a second attempt at hack?
So our new security, it's called Sentinel. And the new security system that is on every Windows machine, somebody downloaded something that seemed like it was something innocent and embedded in that thing was a bunch of code. So the Sentinel said, nope, I'm shutting off, it shuts off the network connection from that device. It stops that device from running anything. And then it reports it to our consulting company and they immediately report it to us. So what has happened historically with many people, many agencies that, and schools and banks and everybody, is if they were attacked, frequently the threat agent will come back and test out and see if they can attack again. So there's always a caution that if they see something, then they'll, you know, they want to make sure that it's not that. In this particular case, it was just as simple as someone downloading something and it had some code embedded in it and the Sentinel said, nope, I'm shutting this off. But literally forty-five seconds before I was notified that they had identified exactly the machine and then they started looking at it, what, what it was, I had already sent out a message saying, okay, proceed cautiously, shut down administrative machines. So that's how that came about. But it was, I don't know, probably twenty minutes.
Yeah.
And we, you know, reeled it back in and said, nope, it was, for all intensive purposes, it wasn't a completely false alarm, but it was something fairly tiny, innocent.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of administrator openings to share with you. So we are in the process of interviewing final candidates for our curriculum director position and the principal position at NIS. Our two curriculum director finalists visited last week for a full day as part of their second interview. They sat with interview committees. They visited classrooms to conduct walkthroughs with members of the interview committee. They met with members of the leadership team and had an open forum for staff and leadership to meet with them and school committee as well. We are in the process of reviewing all of the collected evidence and information and hope to make a decision shortly on a new curriculum director. We are also in the process of interviewing finalists for the NIS principals position. We have interviewed one candidate already for a second time and we'll be interviewing two more, one at the end of this week and one next week. Unfortunately, we are at a standstill with our L-director search. We had three candidates, one of whom was quite promising, but he pulled out after the first interview. And the other two candidates unfortunately did not meet the minimum criteria for the position. So we are back to square one and we'll be doing everything we can to get the word out that this position is open. We will advertise as many places as we can, far and wide, in the hopes that we can find a viable candidate for our English learner director. We will be attending several upcoming job fairs, including a Department of Ed job fair on April 12th, Greater Philadelphia Job Fair tomorrow. And the Massachusetts Education Recruitment Consortium, which is over April break and that's at Boston University. So my hope is that we can find some new viable candidates for these roles and for our open positions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year across the district. On another note, we have started our MCAS testing for English Language Arts. The intermediate school tested grade three last week and will continue with grades four and five this and next week. CPS will test all of their students in grades six through eight this, this coming week. And high school has completed their ELA testing and is looking forward to math in May. And the last update I had is a congratulations to the culinary department of North, excuse me, of, of Nantucket High School, who received third place in the competition that they attended recently. And this is, it's important to note that the first and second place winners came from vocational schools, which have very strong programs. And Nantucket has an equally strong program and did very well by arriving in third place. So we congratulate Chef Proch and his team and that's all.
I just asked a question on that. With the NIS interviews, are there, are you at the point of doing any public meet and greets with any of these candidates?
We have done an open meet and greet with, with staff and we have invited, we have invited people to attend. It is during the day, two-thirty to three-thirty. So, and we can certainly add more if necessary, but at this point, we're, that's, that's what we have offered for an open.
So you said at the end of this week?
We have one other, we have a candidate this week from two-thirty to three-thirty and that's in the NIS library. And then we also have another candidate coming next Wednesday from two-thirty.
You say end of the week, Friday?
Uh, yeah, this Friday, yes. Friday the seventh, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Okay, great.
Okay, presentations and discussions of issues of interest at the committee. Student support services.
Hi, I'm Deb Gately, the Director of Special Services. And I wanted to just clarify on the agenda, it's written as two separate presentations. But Sherry Lewis, our Coordinator of Social, Student Support and SEL, we, we've decided to combine the presentations tonight. We are one department. As the Director of the Department, Sherry had come on a couple of years ago to enhance our department. So what I wanted to do by starting, and hopefully this will actually work. Yep, there we are. Oh, sorry about that. So one of the things to clarify about special services is who's actually included within the department. And I want to clarify that I did omit two positions that I want to include at the end of this. So we have thirty-two special ed liaisons, nine related services providers, which includes speech pathologists, occupational therapists and board certified behavior analysts. We have two of them. Eleven school counselors, five social workers, one contracted tier-three clinician who was brought on a couple of years ago when we saw the increased need in the secondary level for the highest level of social work and emotional support needed. Primarily, that person was brought in to decrease our out-of-district student, kids who, to go out of district in terms of the level of need that they have. But they, that person is contracted through Effective School Solutions and is not a district employee, although they work with district students. We have fifty-three teaching assistants, five school nurses and two team chairs. And the team chairs were brought on three years ago and they coordinate a lot of the work that goes with initial evaluations and reevaluations for IEPs. These individuals are supported by the ESP to the director, which after four months, I find we have someone in that position, so I'm very happy about that. We have an ESP for Individualized Education Plans and we also brought on two years ago, an ESP for Translation Interpretation, who also serves as a parent liaison to our parents in special education. Again, I apologize for this. The positions that were omitted were the one school psychologist that we have in the district. We are currently budgeted to have three. And the two that have been vacant, we are now in our second year of, last year we had one vacancy, now we have two vacancies. And we continue to recruit actively for those positions. In order to supplement what we have done is the school psychologists do the testing for our special ed students for their initial and reevaluation meetings. And I have contracted with five outside contractors from outside of the district who come to the island to test the students and deliver the reports to develop these plans. Additionally, we have a contracted speech provider for Nantucket High School who work with our students that need speech services and she currently provides that remote instruction from the Cape. We have a contracted speech provider for the middle school, who is in person and presents the, provides the services to students. And we also have a contracted physical therapist who works with our students in pre-K to twelve. So all told, we're, we're a department of a hundred and twenty-three individuals that are supported by Sherry and myself. So again, when I started in this position in August of 2020, things have vastly changed since that time. All staff were under my supervision as Director of Special Services. We were mid-pandemic and our, only our highest need students were scheduled to return to school in person. As a department, we supported our students, family and staff as best as we could. But early on in my tenure in this role, we recognized that increased supports we needed to address the academic and social emotional needs that were becoming evident as the twenty-one, twenty-two school year concluded. So within the twenty-one, twenty-two school year for special education, we did create the language-based learning classroom in grades four and five at Nantucket Intermediate School. We had had an established program at CPS and NHS, but did not have it at the intermediate school. And we had, we have highly qualified teachers to be able to address that. We did implement Effective School Solutions at CPS and NHS to work with our highest need students in terms of behavior and social emotional need. We had to update our existing plan on significant disproportionality, which is the qualification of students at a high rate within our minority students. We conducted full-year professional development for teaching assistants from Rebus and Associates in social emotional learning, ELL and special education. And we also completed the tier-focus monitoring site review for special ed and civil rights in May of 2022. And far as student services is concerned, we had one social worker district-wide for last school year. We had four vacancies that were, challenged us incredibly hard. SEL was regularly implemented in only two of the four schools and the district was learning how to best utilize the DESA data that Sherry has presented on previously. That is a diagnostic tool to see how kids are presenting on a daily basis or on a weekly basis and it's comparative data to know how to implement interventions. And again, I've already talked about the fact that for the students that required the highest level of clinical care in the district at the secondary level, we did bring in ESS. So currently, in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, we have three hundred and thirty-five students who are qualified for an IEP. That's within special education. We have eight students who are placed residentially in the out-of-district schools. We are continuing to uphold our agreement through the state of Massachusetts where we support our students at the private schools on the island. We currently have eight students who receive services. The total number of students on IEPs has increased by six students since the beginning of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We've also had ten students that have been discharged from special education through the reevaluation process. Seventeen point nine percent of students in Nantucket are qualified for special ed, which is below the state average of nineteen point four. And this is the first time in two years that we are below the state average. Again, this is just more specific data about our placement of students. Our IEP meetings continue to be held both remotely for the convenience of parents as well as providers that are working with students outside of the school district. So we have many students that receive extra supports from providers. We have people that participate from JRI, from Fair Winds, from DCF, that can't always get to the island. So in order to support the kids as best as we can, we continue to hold the meetings remotely when needed. As far as, like I said, our breakdown, our, our largest population of special education students is in the high school level, but also if you look across, it's relatively even distributed. Six students are in our transition program for ages eighteen to twenty-two. And again, as far as our out-of-district student placements, two students will be aging out in February of 2024, which means they'll turn the age of twenty-two. One student will be transitioning for another school district in July of twenty-three. And as we begin the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, it's anticipated we'll have ten students in residential placements off island.
Currently, we have students on 504s. Right now, we have students in pre, in kindergarten on 504s. Four in grade one, two in grade two. You guys can see the numbers. They're, they've gone up slightly from last year. But I think we do a great job of evaluating students and making sure that they are appropriately placed on 504 plans when needed.
So what we've also done is expanded the language-based learning disabilities program to grade three this year. So we now have a cohesive program in grades three through twelve. So we now have a cohesive program in grades three through twelve. One of the positions that we added to the department was a transition specialist. And she has worked primarily this year with our high school population in developing their transition planning form within special education for students when they reach the age of fourteen. They can become part of their special education meeting and their, in their process. And to effectively start developing how they want to develop a plan for graduation and what they want to do after that. And again, within the state of Massachusetts for special education, students are entitled to services up until the age of twenty-one and three hundred and sixty-four days. We have established this year a very successful partnership with our house for our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old students who go to our house once a week. As a new director in the district, we struggle, I struggled my first year in trying to provide students with increased activities of daily living opportunities. And through the partnership that we've developed with our house, we're able, students are able to go use the kitchen, do daily living skills. And it was just having access to a house that we needed, and there they were. And so it's been amazing. And again, we added a second B C B A this year to the district to provide supports so that our B C B As go in and do direct observation and provide supports to teachers, on students, even if they're not on an I E P, because we know that that need is also there.
This past year, we're happy to report that we have S E L in all schools now. In the elementary schools, grade K through five, they use a second step program. In six, seven, and eight, they use the Trails to Wellness Program. And at the high school, this year we were able to expand the Team Truth Program, so all four grades are now receiving some sort of S E L. Also, continued from what Deb brought when she arrived, the Zones of Regulation and Social Thinking Curriculum. We're trying to expand that district-wide, not just to be used with our social workers and special ed students, but also to be used with our school guidance counselors. And also, some classroom teachers have asked for some of the social thinking and Zones of Regulation materials, which is great because it promotes a common language throughout the entire district. This year, we were able to purchase a new second-step bullying curriculum for grades three through five. In the past years, they haven't had that curriculum, so now that they do, now they do, it's great because we have a consistent curriculum in place for grades K through five. This year, we had, we have our school counselor and social workers position fully staffed in all buildings. And we were really pleased to be able to add a new six-through-eight-grade counselor, as well as a social-emotional learning counseling position in grades six through twelve. This person in the six-through-twelve position helped some of our students transition from hospital settings, also helped some of our more needy students who have a lot of anxiety or just need more support throughout the day that their school counselor and social worker are not able to provide. We're also using D E S A data in about half of the district consistently in determining students who should be placed in groups for additional social-emotional learning support. This year, we had forty-six staff members certified in C P R and A E D training. And the school nursing team has been working collaboratively with me, along with some of the assistant principals, in reviewing the school crisis protocols. In terms of student services and health services, this year we implemented a tiered intervention and referral system. This was put in place to make sure that specific care providers, such as our social workers, were not being overburdened with high caseload numbers. It allows us to review what the need of the student is and make sure that they are receiving help from the right, correct, the correct care provider. We also implemented the Bridges Program, and that is what our new six-through-twelve S E L curriculum, I'm sorry, S E L Counseling Coordinator is looking after. We also have implemented six-week S E L interventions, which are monitored. So rather than saying that a student is going to receive long-term counseling all year, which once again overtaxes some of the counselors' caseloads, we now look to see whether or not the intervention is effective. If it is not, then we take it up to a higher tier of service. This year, we were able to receive S E L grant funds for the second year. Last year, we received ninety-nine thousand dollars. This year, we received a total of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. This money has been used to implement things like the Fair Winds School Counseling Program, where students in school are able to receive counseling services, once again through a referral program, at no cost to them. We also have just recently started the SAVE Program, which is Substance Alcohol Vaping Education. It is for students who have been identified as using vaping substances or alcohol on school campus. And they are, and this is only in grades nine through twelve right now, they are then referred to this program, which, for the first phase of the program, I am co-leading with Elise Norton, who is with A S A P. So we are just launching this program right now. Also, this year, we were able to continue with the Family Connections Program, which we were able to expand in grades K through two. Last year, it was only offered in grades three through five, where students were able to bring their younger siblings with them. This year, we're thrilled to offer it through to grades K through five, and parent participation is also welcome. They receive a hot meal, it's one day a week. This year, we had to shorten the program, it's only four weeks, whereas last year, we were able to do it for six. And also, I've already mentioned the continuation of the Team Truth Program this year. For professional development, counselors, social workers, and school nurses have had access to training in solution-focused brief counseling, trauma-attuned counseling practices, suicide, safety, and threat assessments, recognizing and responding to abuse. And we just recently completed Food First Training with the Nantucket Resource Partnership Program. Counselors who were new to the district this year were able to participate in a mentor program that was designed specifically for them, since we had so many new counselors this year. In regard to community connections, we have been able to make connections with the Behavioral Health Initiative Team, Fair Winds, Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention, Children's Co., who has also come and presented to the counseling staff, Nantucket Resource Partnership, which just did the Food First Training, a Safe Place, and a Family, and the Family Resource Center.
So if you've been following along with the presentation, really, our theme behind tonight was to talk about where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. We are a department that is growing, and if you consider everything that, the current needs that exist on the island and what was in place when I first arrived in two thousand and twenty, we have made progress. To be an individual that was in charge of the entire department when I first arrived, it was not sustainable if we were going to make any real impact on the needs of students and families. So we are grateful for the support of the district to allow us to go in that direction. But we're going to be changing even more coming next year. Upon arrival and the establishment of the team chair positions, which were allocated for N E S and N I S, and then a second one for CPS and N H S, I did a lot of data collection over two years to determine that where the greatest need was, was to have a coordinator of special education who would be working directly with liaisons to support them. Next year, instead of having the team chair positions, I will be working directly with families through the initial evaluation process, the coordinator will work with the reevaluation process. But again, probably what's been more, I feel well-received, is that special education is very clerically heavy. There is a lot of paperwork, and right now, our liaisons are overtaxed in attempting to do all of the work that's associated with that, creating the meeting invitation, mailing out, calling parents for appointments. So one of the things that we're doing as by, these are not new positions, budgeted, they're within the budget, but they're with existing funds. So taking the two team chair positions and creating the coordinator of special ed, we've also created two positions to provide direct clerical support to the special ed liaisons. And again, when I, when I first looked at this and determined, like, where the greatest needs were, this is what I heard the most of, so I'm hoping that we've already started getting candidates, so that's even more encouraging. Because that doesn't always happen. We are going to be introducing, we've done a two-year study on the new I E P management system. One of the things, like I said, I E P is being very clerically heavy. Most districts have access to online documents, parents have the able, ability to access their documents, parents have the ability to, you know, sign their documents online. We are partially there through the use of Aspen as our I E P system, but again, Aspen, as I've explained before, is a student management system. We need to bring in an I E P management system to develop an appropriate plan for students. And the state of Massachusetts is also transitioning, starting next year with a new I E P form. I have elected not to have Nantucket adopt the new form because of the fact of, we can't take on too much at once, we want to become comfortable in this program. But with the new program called Ed Plan, the families will have access to the documents online, as well as to be able to sign the documents online, and will allow special ed liaisons to translate their documents in real time for all of the target languages in the district. Currently, we have one translator-interpreter who does the Spanish translations of our documents, but this will allow us to address all of our languages. We're also going to be establishing a two-year commitment with the Wharton-Gillingham Academy for nine teachers to become fully certified. That's another issue that, that exists within the district about the specialized reading support. In reaction to some existing circumstances, as well as some pandemic fallout, we need to up that ability, to be able to provide that instruction, and that will be funded through our federal grant that we receive every year. And we're also going to be supporting providing training for staff at CPS and N H S and strengthening the co-teaching model to increase the educational access for all students. We will be part of the next cycle of the Tiered Focus Monitoring in twenty-three, twenty-four, just when we thought we were done. The next focus areas will be student identification, I E P development, program and support services, and equal opportunity. We'll be doing the self-assessment next school year, and the site visit will be in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Going forward in student services, with social-emotional learning, we're looking for equity and consistency in the delivery of services. We're also looking to implement some district-wide five oh four and D cap training, so that everybody is using the same language and conducting meetings in the same manner. We're also looking for consistency in tracking R T I data district-wide, consistency in use of the D E S A screener and data district-wide, implementation of mass model frameworks for school counseling programs, and the use of E W I S and vocal data in identifying areas of need and program development. And just for a reminder, we did the E W I S and vocal presentation a couple of months ago, Dr. Hallett and I did. The E W I S is the Early Warning Indicator System, and vocal is the views of climate and learning data. And this is collected through some of the M C A S testing that is done and provided to us by the Department of Education.
So that's it, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
I'm exhausted. Honestly, I, I want to say that I have, I mean, Deb, because we, I see you on another committee, and I know how much you do, and, and what you all are charged with doing is staggering. And, and I honestly don't know how you do it. And just in light of what we heard today from Jackie, and from Brent, and from Hadley, I, I, I want us to find a way to support the sort of boots-on-the-ground piece that I don't, that, where would you have the time to even be able to do it? And I know that you, you both try as much as you can, and I'm, and I know you do a beautiful job, but you, there's only so much you can do. There's so many, there's only so many hours in the day. So I, I feel that as a board, we are charged with finding how, how to do it. I mean, and, and thinking in different ways, and you know, to the master plan idea, I don't, I don't know what it is, but I think that there, and I'm so tired of using the word committee, but for lack of a better one, there needs to be a forum where we can talk about this and brainstorm and, and come up with ways to support our kids, because they need it. It's, it's not, in many ways, it's not working, and, and we know that. I mean, you know, I'm not saying anything that everyone isn't aware of. So I, I just want that to be a part of our minutes, that that's really important, and I know we're in so many different meetings and negotiations, but there, there's no more that you all could possibly do, other than cloning yourselves, which would be great. That would be amazing, but then it would be creepy, too. But I, I just, I think that that is something that we really need to do and want to support the incredible work that you are doing, so that's not really a question, it's more of a.
It's appreciated.
I would echo what Laura just said. I can't even imagine spending one day with either one of you, I'd be exhausted.
You're welcome anytime.
I would love to. Couple of questions, I think Sherry had presented the number of students who are receiving special education services. And I'm just struck by the number, pre-K, it's thirty-four, and we're up to ninety-two in high school.
So I'd love to talk about that, if I can, for just a minute. So with, another concern on the island is the lack of, we had very disjointed early intervention services for a couple of years. And we have just reinstated, my partner in crime, Michelle Robertson, is here, that helps me with that. The, the Cape and Island Services from the Kennedy Donovan Center just kind of disappeared for a while, and now they're being reinstated. So we're getting more referrals of students that hadn't been serviced. We don't have Head Start, which is, it, it's indescribable of how much an impact it has, to the point where I've had conversations with Dr. Hallett, like, do I go to the state level? Do I go to our state rep? Do I talk about how we get Head Start back on Nantucket? Because again, having come from urban and suburban districts off-island, that was a given, so we don't have that. So that's also another consideration. So when we look at especially our youngest learners, we're finding students at the very, like I said, at the pre-K level, where they're simply, a lot of their pandemic, all of their pandemic treatments were done remotely. And if you've ever tried to work with a two-year-old remotely and trying to do occupational therapy, it's impossible. And, and even now, a lot of their services are still remote, and, because not, our parents don't have the opportunity to not work and to take them to the Cape to get treatment. So that's something that, what causes some of our larger numbers. At the high school, where we're seeing the increase is the, our dual-identified learners, students that are coming in from other countries with interrupted education, but really identified disabilities. So they may not have been identified as being, having learning disabilities when they were younger, but not having the resources in their home country. And then when they're coming here, we're, we're working with them to provide both sides of it. And that actually is district-wide, but it's been more pronounced in the high school in the past couple of years. So we have had students who have qualified for I E Ps, which is typically unheard of in tenth and eleventh grade, because that's the first time they've been in a regular school setting.
Makes sense, thank you for going through that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just curious if, if either of you have heard of a program called Youth Mental Health? And has that ever been a consideration for our district, youth mental health?
I, I have heard of the program, and there are so many different programs out there. And it's just basically trying to get the infrastructure in here first, in figuring out how to plug any of those extra holes. So I am looking at a couple of different programs.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I know there's, there's just so many. Do we have psychologists in all schools now? I know you said earlier on in the.
So no. So right now, we have one school psychologist, and she is primarily, well, she, all she does is testing and evaluation.
And what school is she in?
And she's doing district-wide. So what happened is, the, the proposal with the other two positions was to have the caseload evenly divided, so that we had district-wide psychologists. And that hasn't happened. So the people that we have contracted with, who really, because of the amount of work they've had to do with us, my goal was to not overtax any of them, and so we have contracted with them, and they've, like, become part of our district for that reason. But these are people who work for other districts, who are taking personal time from their jobs to come here. And what we do is we bring them over, they'll test for a couple of days, then they'll come to the meetings. But it's not, and I fully acknowledge this, it is not like having someone that's in district that can continue to work with families. But my job is to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the students, and even though I feel like sometimes I'm playing a puzzle, like, playing with a puzzle and putting things together, it, it's, we are meeting the needs of our kids right now, and we're. it it's, we are meeting the needs of our kids right now and we're doing it compliantly. So could we do it better? A hundred percent. But the conversations that I've had with a couple of school psychologist candidates as of late, I'm sorry, I'm going to say it's housing. I can't get people, like, I I have people that are just like, oh, my gosh, I, you know, even a couple of the contracted providers are like, I would leave my job to come work with you. Great. And and what what can I do about that? Because it's hard enough and it's unfortunate. But again, I can't, I I choose not to dwell on that part of it. I have to meet what the kids need right now and we continue to piece it together.
Thank you. Sorry. We've gone back and forth over the years where we have worked with Fair Winds in their different naming cycles. And also Strong Wings was a very popular and I think successful program. And I would just encourage you to, I know Fair Winds has done an amazing job recently in really partnering more in the community and I know with a school as well. But if we're able to get grant funds or have a conversation with them, see if they're qualifying for, qualify for grants. Clearly, the need is much more than we can provide with our staff. So I just would encourage, I I, you know, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I just, I know that the work that we've done in the past with mental health counseling and drug counseling and Strong Wings. And my other comment here with the substance abuse, alcohol vaping education, I think if I heard you right, you were doing that with students who are identified as users. What are we doing for the kids that we haven't identified? Like, is is there any, any follow-up?
That is a great question and that is a question that I was asked by one of our school nurses, the high school nurse this morning. And what I have said is that if they know of anybody who wants to self-refer to participate in the SAVE program, they are more than welcome to. As I said, this is a pilot program. It is very new. We're just trying to address the immediate need, which I heard concerns voiced about this evening. And so we, we, it's a six-week intervention program. I'm looking forward to seeing what data we collect about the effectiveness of the program and also getting students to participate. Right now, it's not mandatory. Going forward, students that are found, it will be part of their re-entry program, part of sort of a diversion program. We're trying to stay away from the word diversion. We we really want it to be an educational program where the focus is on goal-setting, developing healthy habits. And so I think as the the program really starts to gain some traction and we're able to start identifying the needs of those who we know have been caught using, then we will be able to start addressing the larger needs as well. But anybody is welcome to participate if they want to self-refer.
Thank you. Final question. I know when Deb presented a couple of months ago, one of the conversations that we had here for our EL population was being able to have somebody available as a translator because special education is a huge, vast area and there's so much for parents to learn. So when you're working with this through a second language, it's emotional and difficult. So I just wondered if we've been able to, I think we talked about the.
The MLPEC?
Yes, thank you. I know they were interested in having some of the families. So I just wondered if, where we are with that and if we've been able to bring some of our EL parents together with folks that can translate one-on-one.
I I will tell you that in terms of that formal arrangement, that hasn't been clearly established yet. But with the, with bringing on Sessi Gutierrez as our translator interpreter in the office, she, she is literally everywhere in terms of bringing IEPs to parents' homes and talking to them. And when the parents come in and bring their kids and she's talking with them. I do need to point out, because I'm very proud of the fact that I, that everyone in my office, with the exception of me, it's a Spanish speaker. So my assistant, the the ESP for IEPs and our interpreter translator are all Spanish-speaking. So we, we find within our office, we are regulating things even beyond special education. We're regulating transportation issues. We're regulating health issues, registration issues. And we'll do whatever we have to do because if a parent comes to us with their question, if we can't help them, we're going to get them to who can. And it's usually, it's usually pretty quick. But yeah, I agree with you. We still have to look at, that's probably been one of our challenges this year. And I know Snack is presenting tonight as well, who's our supervisory and and supporting board. More of that does need to be done because we have more and more kids that are dual-identified.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
I just want to say, great job. What are you doing? I can't imagine doing that job and then having a stack of paperwork. Awesome job.
I have a question. Is the SAVE program something that could be implemented at the middle school as well? I know you said it was just starting out, but.
Yeah, the the goal is eventually to have it also be in the middle school. But right now, we're just trying to address the high school because it is a pilot program. It's so new. Before we start making it a bigger program and launch it at different grade levels, we kind of want to do some troubleshooting and see what was working really well, what wasn't working, so that when we roll it out to a broader audience, we know that it's going to be highly effective.
Thank you.
And if I could just conclude on the same vein, a lot of what's happening in the district coming out of the pandemic, within our department, there has been significant turnover in the last, I would say, five to seven years, including my job in terms of me being here, coming in in 2020. There had been a lot of turnover prior to that. And one of the focuses that Sheri and I have is to establishing those structures and supports for our faculty and our families to know kind of what to expect and how it's coming. And so some programs that we've developed have been reactionary because we've had to address an immediate need. But one of the things that we're trying to do is build for the long-term capacity to make sure that it's done right. So that's another part where we encourage at all times anybody to come to talk to us about what they feel like can be adjusted or can be fixed or if they have questions about it, because what we work with is very complicated. And most people don't understand. We live it every day. But we we do encourage any questions to be directed towards us and we'll be happy to talk with anyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Special needs advisory council?
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Franzudo and this is Laura Steele and we're co-chairs of Snack. And I think it's kind of like a testament to the heart that we have for this work. Laura's son is, left, graduated Nantucket High School and he's traveling independently to college over on the Cape. And my son is twenty-five and receiving adult services with Department of Developmental Disabilities. And we're still here. So thank you for inviting us. It was great to be back in the building this year for the first time in a long time. And we continue to offer our meetings in a hybrid format because we find that some parents have childcare issues, you know, by nighttime, it's it's like the witching hour and they just can't get out of the house. So that's really helped our attendance to have the hybrid option. We found that this year has kind of been a year of discovery for us as co-chairs and as an organization. And I likened it to when you're buying clothes for your pre-team. You know, that shirt they liked that week, they're not interested in it the next week or the next month. And so some of the programs that we offered in previous years that went over really well just did not have the interest this year. So that made us stop back and think that we need to, you know, change with the times and change with our population. As the population changes, as special needs changes, then we need to be responsive to those needs. And so we've already have a plan of action over the summer that we're going to be meeting and hopefully some of our other board members will join us to plan for the upcoming school year. We'll be sending out a parent survey to see what what they want to hear. And we don't want our offerings to be limited just to special education. We want, we just had a great presentation by Dr. Price from Fair Winds and Amanda Wright on anxiety in children. And it was a fantastic presentation and we would like to see more people who necessarily weren't a part of special ed, just to hear the message. And as an organization, we always work best when we work collaboratively. And we really cherish our relationships with Angela Knapp and Martha's Vineyard Community Services, Carrie Ray from Nantucket Star, the Nantucket Community School, Jen Christensen, the Transition Specialist. She's been such a jewel this year. Fair Winds and of course Deb Gately and Sessi Gutierrez because for the second year, she has come to do our, to translate our meetings. But she's not there translating, so it's not like you have to stop and talk and then, and say anything. She has a separate link and so she is simultaneous translating. And it's like, we'd like to have more participation, but we're going to work on that. And Snack is also fortunate to have two leaders, myself and Laura Cavati, who are trained by Mass Families Organizing for Change. And it's a statewide coalition comprised of parents, individuals with disabilities, their allies, supporters, working for things to be, to work for them. It's not like what we think they need. It's like, what what do you need? What can we help you with? And so we're going to be meeting with parents and families from kindergarten through grade twelve and beyond because we can offer resources, transition services, and information, trainings. And a lot of this is state, will be paid for by the state. So if they go to a conference or something, the state will cover the cost. And so with that, we're looking for twenty, twenty-three and twenty-four to be a building year. And hope you all join us at one of our upcoming meetings or workshops. And Laura's going to talk about what we've been doing this year.
Go into a little bit more detail as to some of what some of our programs were. So I apologize if I'm reading a little bit more than than Suzanne did. But I want to thank you again for inviting us to talk. You know, this year, we continue to try to get the word out about Snack and the parental supports that we can offer. Once again, Martha's Vineyard Community Services has been instrumental in connecting us with presenters and programs and we value this ongoing partnership. Our October meeting was actually a meeting of the minds in which we joined the Martha's Vineyard IPAC, which was really cool, in a joint meeting on Zoom. We did it all Zoom for that one, but coordinated by Martha's Vineyard Community Services. And it was really kind of a neat exchange of ideas between Martha's Vineyard, what are you doing? What are we doing? And we're looking forward to doing that again in our May meeting, which will be our last meeting of the year. We are pleased to welcome Jennifer Christensen as the NPS Transition Liaison. This year, she's been really helpful in connecting parents to services. And I can speak from my own experience in that one of her first tasks, unexpected to Deb, was that she, was to escort my son to Cape Cod Community College when his ed coach broke her foot on orientation day. So she started out traveling with him. He is now participating in the Cape Cod Community College MACI program. MACI stands for the Massachusetts Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment Initiative. And as part of this program, students who are on IEPs can attend FERCs with the help of an educational coach. The state pays for the tuition and the books and the district pays for the ed coach and the travel. This has been a game changer for our family. I mean, we had tried looking into some other programs for him, you know, special ed colleges and things like that. Nothing really panned out. So, you know, when we sort of went with this, I was looking for more of a residential program, kind of felt like I was settling for something. But it's been really, it's been really great and I think it's leading him on another path. Our hope is that he will be able to live residentially at like perhaps Bridgewater State, which is their college that uses the MACI program and has a residential program. So that would be, that would be kind of the goal. But they, students can attend to classes and gain real, you know, college experience. So that's been very, very cool for us. We've also had some great guests at our meetings, including Josh Malitzky, who spoke about the Public Works Partnership with the town. I don't know if you've seen this in the town newsletter. Josh and some parents approached the town about creating opportunities for young adults with special needs. Last summer, the program employed three young men who worked as a community cleanup crew. And these paid positions were funded by the town and those employed learned skills and responsibility and gained work experience under the supervision of a town employee. They're hoping to expand this program because the pilot worked out so well. And there's a recognition that not all of our kids want to work outside. I know my son does not want to pick up trash. So they are looking for opportunities for them to work in offices and and find positions that the town actually needs that these, that our kids can fulfill. So that's exciting and we're looking, we're eager to see where that program goes. Our February meeting was scheduled at the same time as Kevin Rosario's important talk. So we, we said, go to that instead. And so we waived that. But last month, as Suzanne mentioned, we were happy to host Amanda Wright and Dr. Margaret Price from Fair Winds to talk about anxiety and how it affects kids differently at each age. And I thought this was really important because I know that, you know, when my son was really struggling in kindergarten, I realized then, we found out then that it was anxiety, which doesn't obviously present itself the way you might think, you know, it would for a, for a teen. And I actually want to segue that into responding to Jackie Fai. I was kind of really disappointed to hear there's not an options program at NIS anymore. That's really sad to me because that was a game changer for my son. And I know Seth started out, Seth Kearns started out there and moved to middle school, but I was under the impression that there still was an options program. Right. Sorry, NES does not though, right? Yeah, so that's, that's heartbreaking to me. So, because kindergarten through second was very transformative for my son through that program. So I hope that is something as a district you can look at bringing back because that's, would be important. But back to the anxiety, we feel that anxiety is so prevalent amongst our kids and our teens that we wanted to invite all parents to the meeting. Traditionally, I think our, our Snack is announced to the IEP community. But I specifically asked if we could send this district-wide. And we were happy to see some new faces that showed up for that meeting. And that shows us that there's more we need to do to get the word out. Some of our best networking takes place kind of after the business portion of the meeting, when we, during what we call our uncommon parents support group. This is an opportunity for parents to share their worries and hopes for their children and with other parents and learn what worked for them and connect with people who just have similar experiences. I recently heard the phrase, you are only as happy as your saddest child. And having a child who has anxiety right now, that really struck me. And, you know, whatever our kids are going through, we're going through with them. And sometimes just knowing that another parent gets it is like a life raft. So there's more work we need to do in outreach. We've created a welcome letter that we have asked to be sent to the parents with IEPs. We're, we will update it this summer, so hopefully it can go out with the packets this year that go out so that people know about us. I recently spoke to a teacher at the public school who didn't even know Snack existed. And I was like, what, really? So, you know, maybe it just wasn't on our radar, but this, but to have a, to have our teachers be able to say to another parent, oh, hey, do you know there's this committee and there's this support group and this could be helpful to you. You know, we would, I would want, I would like to get the word out and more inclusion from our teachers to come to our meetings too and and our administrators to attend our meetings. I think it's so important, regardless of IEP status. You know, we want to help spread the word so that all kids are welcome. We want to include anyone who has a child who's struggling. So just as a reminder, our mission is, the Snack is organized to empower parents, school staff and community professionals to collaborate in a positive decision-making process to plan and implement programs for students with special needs. Our number one goal is to support, guide, advocate, advise and educate parents, Nantucket Schools and the community on the rights and needs of children with disabilities and their families. So we appreciate your time and inviting us.
Thank you.
Ismael?
No questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have two. I'm curious, I think the MACI program sounds fantastic. And I'm just curious how many young people are served by that from our community?
I don't know from our community. You might be able to answer that better than me. I'm only aware of one or two. One.
There's one. I I wonder if a lot of people, I mean, it, that seems such a great way of.
It it is a very specialized program with specific criteria. So that's how, you have to have the recommendation of your school district.
Oh, okay. But it sounds wonderful for your son. And then I'm curious about the options program that you mentioned. I'm not familiar with that. That used to be at NES.
And is at NIS. So I don't know if somebody else wants to weigh in more, but I found that it was, for my son in particular, it.
So I don't know if somebody else wants to weigh in more, but I found that it was, for my son in particular, it, um, yeah, why don't you talk?
Yeah, I just, I, I, that's a new-
So. There is, there are programmed, structured programs within each of the schools. And we service students according to their IEP service needs and not necessarily fitting them into a program. Although that's, I, I don't know that I can change that philosophy as quickly as I would like to. When I arrived in Nantucket, we had an established program, the IDSC, Intensive Development Support Center. And that IDSC was used as a label at NISCPS and NHS. Options, same thing, more so for social, emotional, behavioral needs. And I actually contracted this year with a program consultant who comes to the island once a month, kind of like what Jan Larson does for language-based learning. This consultant does it with the options program because we need better definition on what's going on with the program in terms of entrance and exit criteria. One of the, one of the things in, Kim, Kubish and Kim obviously can certainly jump in, but philosophically, when students are at the younger levels, pre-K, K1 and 2, we classify them as mild to moderate and moderate to severe in terms of their disability categories because those, all of those kids are qualified under the disability of developmental delay. So we have kids who we have to service. So when we put them into program classifications, it is real, it doesn't mean they don't need services that we can provide to them. But when we put them into sub-separate programs per se, we're not allowing that growth that can happen. But again, I, I realize that I might not be the, the majority opinion. So to say that the options program does not exist, I, I don't think is completely true because we are servicing the kids based on their level of need. When they get to NIS, when they're bigger kids and can understand more about what they're doing, then they have the opportunity to access that one person that might be, I need a break, I need to go to options and I, and then I come back in. Because really, options as a program only exists at CPS and, and NIS. It's not, because again, once they go to the high school, there's different services there as well. So again, I, I, I think we need to continue to focus the conversation on level of need for students as opposed to programming. Because that's really hard because then you start pigeonholing. So I don't want to seem contradictory, but that's kind of the philosophy that we're carrying.
You're getting applause, so I guess.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just, I'm unfamiliar with it, so thank you.
No questions. Thank you both for staying with Snack.
Yes, I have a question. You mentioned that when you mentioned your program to the teacher, she didn't know you existed. I would wonder if the administration could set it up so that you could present to the teachers and the teachers could get the message to the parents. But it seems to me, if the teacher didn't know about it, how's the parent going to know about it? So maybe we could set up something that you could present to the teachers each school at a time. You know, it doesn't have to be, you know, your message is strong. You need like 10 to 15 minutes to make it work. And the first thing you got to figure out is, how can we not know who we are? We're here to help you. You know what I mean?
That's a great idea.
Okay, thank you, that's all you have.
Thank you, remember.
Thank you.
Okay, committee discussions and votes to be taken. Vote to approve the donation to Nantucket Community School to support family swim from the Nantucket Triathlon Club in the amount of $3,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation to Nantucket Community School to support Learn to Swim Program from Community Foundation for Nantucket in the amount of $1,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation to Nantucket Community School to support programming from the Nantucket Golf Club Foundation in the amount of $28,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation to Nantucket Community School towards the purchase of a new driver's ed vehicle from Nantucket Education Trust in the amount of $7,500.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation to Nantucket Community School towards the purchase of a new driver education vehicle from the Ladies Union Circle in the amount of $1,500.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation to Nantucket Community School towards a teen yoga program from Town, Town of Nantucket Health and Human Services in the amount of $5,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation to Nantucket Community School towards the exercise program from the Town of Nantucket Health and Human Services in the amount of $5,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation to Nantucket Community School towards the early childhood program from Mr. and Mrs. Robert Hossleen in the amount of $100.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation to Nantucket Community Schools towards the youth yoga program from the Harvey Foundation in the amount of $2,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation to Nantucket Community School towards the purchase of a new driver's education vehicle from the Community Foundation for Nantucket, Inc. in the amount of $1,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, February 21st, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
March 21st meetings, minutes are not available. Vote to approve transfers and invoices.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, subcommittee working group.
We're in negotiations and continue. We had a meeting today and we'll have another meeting tomorrow.
We're still in negotiations. We had a meeting today, we have a meeting tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day, and the next day. And we're also, we're still anything, I'm on that committee with the principal list?
That's not as much a subcommittee, but yes, we do have school committee representation on the, in the NIS principal committee. And thank you, Mr. Fox, for, for your time and effort and being part of that committee. So thank you. I would like to, to reconvene the policy committee to begin look at the L policies. It's your favorite meeting to do.
I guess, Markie and I are very excited.
We will do it after the vacation. So that we, and we'll be prepared and head into that, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Natalie?
I just wanted to note that the seniors today had the Credit for Life fair, which was awesome. We had some volunteers from Cape Cod Five here. And there was like a couple of people that came from off-island. They gave a presentation to the seniors about just some financial stuff and things to think about right now, regardless of what we're doing next year. And then we did something online where we chose what career we're thinking about going into and we see roughly how much we would make and then factor in like other expenses, like housing and everything. So that was really eye-opening.
Don't worry.
They didn't see y'all in Nantucket, did they?
And then another thing is that the Accidental's and Natural Singing Group are going to New York City on Thursday, which is a really great opportunity. We're seeing two Broadway shows. We're going to a couple of different workshops. We're doing an improv workshop and a stage combat workshop. We're pretty much touring everything, Empire State Building. We did have to do fundraising for that, but it's a really great opportunity, so we're excited.
So great. Do you know what shows you're seeing?
We're seeing Hamilton and Hades Town.
Amazing.
We're excited.
So great.
I did try to become a chaperone, but unfortunately Mrs. Vassal hit me too.
Yeah. Of course you did.
Yeah, exactly. She got in there first, so.
Okay, Jen, for the next meeting?
So our next meeting is actually next Tuesday. We will be holding a workshop. We have two different agenda items. One is the, the District Improvement Plan Year Four Midyear Review. We moved it to that time because it is, it ties right into our district report card overview as well and data dive. We have done this before, so you will remember it is a, a good opportunity for us to really dig into the district report card to understand our data and to ask a lot of questions. So we will consider our location. Last time we did it in the LGI, but it might be in the NHS conference room based on what we have for space. Is that six o'clock? Yes.
Okay, any other business, news? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will be traveling next week. We're away next week. Yes. And I, I don't-